Welcome to the February 6, 2014, meeting of the Planning Commission. Tonight's agenda is available on the counter along the wall with request-to-speak cards. A reminder to everyone that request-to-speak cards should be completed and turned to the clerk prior to completion of any staff presentation. For those speakers wishing to speak on items not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of this commission, please write item number on your card. All speakers will be limited to three minutes. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and televised, so all speakers in order to be recognized must be called on by the chair and come forward to the microphone. Speaking in public may cause some individuals to be uncomfortable, so everyone is asked to be professional and respectful at all times. This time I'd like to ask Chris Palmedes to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) 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 So, as this is my last night as chair, I believe, I'd like to thank staff again for a great year, all the assistance you've given me. Thank you very much, David. Sandeep, thank you. We'll move on to item number A, election of Planning Commission Chair and Vice Chair and Secretary, and I will just start with the chair and then vacate the seat to whoever's replacing me. Do I have any nominations?
Mr. Chair, I would like to nominate Jennifer Perez to serve as Chair of the Planning Commission for the next year. A second that.
Alright. Nomination's been made, it's been second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against say nay. There it is. Jennifer.
Good evening. I would like to have a nomination for Vice Chair.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to nominate Jeremy Olson as the Vice Chair.
Okay. Do I get a second?
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose? Great. Welcome, Jeremy.
Thank you.
And then, next we have Secretary.
I'd like to nominate David, Mr. David Tilly, to serve as Secretary, continuing to serve as Secretary for the Commission.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Great. So we have our next year planned out. Next thing on the agenda is presentations by the public on matters not on the agenda but within jurisdiction of the Commission. I don't see anything. No? Do we have correspondence and staff communications from the Planning Commission Secretary?
Yes, thank you very much. Congratulations, first of all, to our new Chair and Vice Chair for this year. We look forward to working with you and thank you for allowing me to continue to be your Secretary. This is our first meeting of the year, so happy new year to all of you who have not seen you since last year. Couple items of note tonight. We have the League of California Cities Planning Commissioner Academy that's coming up at the end of March in San Francisco. We are still seeking if any planning commissioners are interested in attending that to let me know or Katie offline so that we can make those arrangements for you. It's March 26 to 28. We'd very much be interested in having as many as two of you attend. This is one of the better trainings that's out there for planning commissioners specifically. And then, secondly, this year, based on some changes in the Brown Act, we're maybe have some, one minor procedural change that we'll employ here at the Planning Commission when you take votes on projects and various other items. To the extent we have a unanimous vote, we will continue to vote in our normal manner, but for any votes that come up where there's not a unanimous vote, we'll need to do a roll call vote at that time, so, which is something we have done on occasion in the past, especially when votes have been close, we want to make sure we have it right, but when those times rolled around, we'll do a roll call vote and we'll just need each commissioner to clearly enunciate what their vote is, yea or nay, on the item. So relatively minor change, but it's something we'll all have to remember as projects come forward and we take votes on our projects. So with that, I'll close my communications.
Great, thank you. Next we have disclosure of ex parte communications. Anybody?
Madam Chair, yes. I did speak with constituent, informing them about item four on the agenda, just asking for them to participate in today's meeting.
Okay, great. Thank you, Commissioner Guerrero. Okay, then, moving right along, we'll go down to the consent agenda.
Madam Chair, before we take on the consent agenda, I'm requesting that you split up the items at least number three, as I have to abstain from that one.
Okay.
We would recommend you take a separate vote on each item, since we did anticipate a few abstentions on each item.
Item number one, consideration and approval of the minutes for our November 7 meeting.
Madam Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve the minutes of November the 7.
I'll second that.
Any abstentions?
I need to abstain, I was not at that meeting.
Okay, great. One abstention. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you.
Madam Chair, may we do a roll call on that vote, please?
Oh, sure.
Katie, please will you call the roll?
Sandeep?
I abstain.
Galvan?
Aye.
Leibig?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Perez?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Guerrero?
Aye.
Thank you. Item number two, consideration and approval of the minutes from the December 5 meeting.
Madam Chair, I'll move approval of the December 5, 2013, meeting notes.
I'll second.
Any abstentions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That item passes. On to consent agenda number three, zoning administrator approval of Plan Development 29, minor modification.
Just for point of record, I have to abstain from this item because I have a conflict due to my residence.
Okay. We'll wait for Commissioner Leibig to leave.
Madam Chair, when the Commission is ready to vote on this item, we would request a roll call vote on this one as well.
I'll move the recommended action.
Can I ask a question before we vote?
Sure.
I want to, what area is it exactly covering? Is it just the gated portion of the community? Does it go all the way down Fifth Street?
It encompasses all those portions within the rivers area that have the RA area and the RC designations within the rivers. So this portion of the, so it would include some areas that are technically outside the gates. Presently, there's a couple of streets over there that are outside the gates, but it's the principal part of the rivers is within the gates, and our intention was to cover that entire area that's covered by the old PD text, which actually goes back to the old Lighthouse days from the 80s.
Is that when that was put into effect, was back at Lighthouse?
Yes, it was. Yeah, there's some still original circa 1987, 88 text that's still applicable, and this is one of those provisions that we thought was kind of antiquated.
And the best of our knowledge, it's the only area we have it in the city?
Yes, that's correct. Yeah, this is in that specific text.
Thank you.
Chair Perez, since this item was discussed, I suggest that you request if there are any public comments before the Commission votes on this.
Okay, thank you. Are there any public comments on this issue? Okay, so, close that and ask for a motion?
I'll move the recommended action.
I'll second the recommended action.
And a roll call vote, please.
Guerrero?
Aye.
Sandeep?
Aye.
Leibig?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Perez?
Aye.
Galvan?
Aye.
Thank you. So that motion has passed? Is there something I need to read? No? Okay. So we'll go on to item number four.
And Madam Chair, I need to recuse myself, I have property, I own property that's adjacent to this item, so I will see you at the next meeting, I guess.
Okay, thank you.
Well, congratulations.
So, item number four is a public workshop regarding the proposed summer place living at Westgate Assisted Living Facility.
Senior Planner Sandra White will present this item.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Chairperson Perez.
Sandra, I don't think you're on.
Sorry about that. Good evening, Chairperson Perez and members of the Planning Commission. This is a public workshop regarding a proposal to develop an assisted living facility. The, sorry, hold on. The project site is approximately 6.72 acres, is bounded by Jefferson Boulevard on the west, Gateway Drive on the south, and the Clark'sburg Trail on the east, and there is a residential labor hood that is located approximately 200 feet east of the project site. The applicant proposes to subdivide the property into two lots. The assisted living facility would be located on parcel one, which is approximately 5.31 acres. Parcel two would be approximately 1.41 acres. Other than a through-block pedestrian trail, no development is proposed for parcel two as part of this project. You have a copy of the site plan as an attachment three to your Planning Commission staff report. I need to mention that it shows a monopine cell tower, and for clarification, the cell tower is not being proposed as part of the project, so I just want to clear that up. The site plan underwent a properly a couple of iterations, and so it just got left on the site plan, but I want to clear that up for your consideration. Implementation of the project requires approval of a tentative parcel map, a conditional use permit, a zoning administrator parking modification, and design review approval. The two-story assisted living facility would be approximately 141,235 square feet and consist of 178 units with a capacity to serve 205 residents. The proposed project would provide employment for approximately 72 staff, and staffing would be provided on a 24-hour basis. Primary access to the project would be provided from Jefferson Boulevard via a two-way driveway at the existing traffic signal at the intersection of Valley Oak Lane. This will be a shared driveway providing ingress and egress for both of the parcels. In addition, a 25-foot wide fire lane service access drive is proposed in the rear of the project. This project is unique to the city, since this is the first assisted living facility that is being proposed. Prior to the February 20 public hearing, staff thought it would be prudent to conduct a workshop with the Planning Commission so that staff and the applicant can address any concerns or issues that the Planning Commission may have regarding the project. And we have highlighted several matters for your consideration. Relative to the Southport Framework Plan, this site has two zones designations. It is zone mixed use, and it is also zone public open space. Based on the location of the zone line, staff estimates that approximately five acres of the 6.72 acre site is zone mixed use. This is important because the Southport Framework Plan design guidelines recommend a specific mix of land uses for mixed-use zone properties in Southport. The design guidelines delineate several mixed-use districts. This site is located in what is known as the Town Center District, which is between, this is a small map, but it's between Jefferson Boulevard, the railroad tracks, and the southernly boundary is Lake Washington. The project site is located in this area here. The guidelines are very vague as to whether the land use mix is based on a site-by-site basis, or if the mix is based on all the properties located in the Town Center District. In addition, the guidelines do not specify how the percentages should be applied, should be applied on a floor area basis or an acreage basis. And lastly, the proposed project does not neatly fit into the land use categories. It is providing a specific type of housing for a special needs population. However, it is neither an apartment nor condominium complex. It provides a bridge gap between an independent living environment and a nursing home. The proposed project could be considered a community facility in that it provides a service that would be available to the community at large. So this is a policy question that staff is seeking your input on as to how this should be considered. In addition, the landowner, which is separate from the applicant, they're two different entities. The landowner plans to develop residential on the remaining lands located south of Gateway Drive, and this is the area that I'm speaking about right here. For the Commission's consideration, basing this land use mix on a site-by-site basis does not work for this project. It would be considered a residential use or a community facility. And we have estimated, I have estimated, that the Town Center District, this district encompasses approximately 32 acres, and approximately three acres of the district is already developed. So if the proposed project is considered either residential or community facility, it would be consistent with either land use mix recommended in the design guidelines if the mix is based on all the acreage encompassed in the district. The second thing I want to mention about zoning, I'm going to go back to this exhibit here, is that the zone boundary line between the mixed-use zone and the public open space zone is approximate. The line is not based on any existing lot lines, and it is not based on any specific acreages. The assisted living facility and most of the improvements will be located on the mixed-use zone portion of the property with exception of 16 of the 73 parking spaces. Those parking spaces will either straddle the zone line or be located in that part of the parcel that will be zone public open space. Parking as a primary use is not allowed in the public open space zone. This would certainly be applicable if a parking lot was established in the open space zone on a separate parcel as the only use on the site. In this instance, assisting, the 16 parking spaces that are proposed to be located on the lot will be associated with a specific use and would be pertinent to the assisted living facility, and staff does not see a conflict with allowing parking on that portion of the site that is zone public open space. Based on the preliminary site plan, I calculated that approximately 8,200 square feet of the parcel is zone public open space. Segwaying into parking, the city's parking standards require one space per 1,000 square feet for senior housing, and based on this standards, 141 spaces would be required for this project. The applicant has requested a zoning administrator approval for reduced parking standards, since most of the residents are not expected to own a vehicle or drive, and the applicant is requesting approval to reduce the required parking from 141 spaces to 73. And in the staff report, you have information provided by the applicant justifying the request. The last thing I want to mention about the parking is that the applicant estimates that the facility would generate approximately 14 service calls per month for medical emergencies. A parking space for emergency vehicles is proposed to be provided in the rear of the facility. And 11-foot wide by 30-foot long space is shown on the site plan, that's your attachment three. The fire department informed staff this week that they would need a 14-wide space to accommodate their vehicles. Although a space will be provided in the rear, staff anticipates that there may be some instances where the vehicles, emergency vehicles, may be needed to stage in the main driveway. As far as the landscaping is concerned, the landscaping plans will be thoroughly reviewed by, at the building permit stage, in the event that the project is approved, but based on the preliminary landscaping plans, the proposed project appears to be consistent with the city's standards. According to the applicant, approximately 29.5% of the site will be landscaped, and based on the city's landscaping standards, we can only require 25%, but if the developer wants to exceed that threshold, they can do that. Some of the streets, trees that along Gateway Drive will be relocated, only because there are several easements along the Gateway frontage, and those trees will be relocated to the main driveway entrance. A retaining wall will also be located near the access drive located in the rear. The ditch located on the project site will be filled and graded for the access drive, and the retaining wall is necessary to hold the required field to build the access drive, to bring the access drive road to an acceptable grade. The, I had mentioned earlier that the project is proposing a 15-foot wide through-block trail on parcel two. That through-block trail will provide an accessible connection to the Clark'sburg Trail located in the rear of the site. Staff is recommending that the developers construct a temporary trail as part of the project, and the reason being is that we don't know when parcel two will be developed. It could be, you know, next year, it could, you know, it could be several years away, but in the event that it is developed, when it is developed, with, you know, at that time, we require permanent improvements. In the meantime, maintenance of the through-block trail will be the responsibility of the property owner. And lastly, the project is subject to design review. The applicant has submitted colors and elevations and materials to this effect, and they're proposing what's called a contemporary California mission style, a design with stucco, stone veneer, railings, onings, and roof tile. The color palette primarily consists of earth tones, and we are encouraging the applicant to revise the color scheme and use some colors other than standard tans and browns. The only, the last thing I want to mention about the design guidelines is that the Southport Design Guidelines include architectural themes for the four villages in Southport, but as far as this project is concerned, which is, and this project is located in northeast village, there are, there is no specific architectural theme that's called out. So it's open up to, so that's why the applicant has, is recommending or proposing a contemporary California mission style. This is, project is scheduled for the February 20 public hearing. In order to meet the applicant's schedule, property owners located within 500 foot of this project were notified of tonight's public workshop, and they will also be notified of the public hearing. This concludes my presentation, and I'm available to answer any questions that you may have, and also the applicant is available in the audience tonight.
Thank you, Sandra. Do we have any questions for Sandra for presentation?
I'll hold my questions until after public comments.
I'll hold my questions also.
So do we have any questions for the applicant?
I believe the applicant has a presentation of their own, they would like to, if it suits the Commission, and then we can all answer questions after, if that would be your preference.
Okay. Please, applicant?
Thank you, Sandra. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Dean Masakawa with LRS Architects. Do we need to read my address into the record? Or just, can I go ahead into the?
No, go ahead, just your name. Thank you.
I just want to give a brief overview of the project and its design, and I'm sorry, I had a clicker here when you started, and I don't have it.
(laughing)
Okay. On the screen, if we can advance to the next slide, Katie, please. As Sandra mentioned, the major access is located off Jefferson Street here, and we have a circulation road that goes in front and around the project to provide access for fire, as well as service and garbage to the rear of the building. If you want to go ahead and advance one more slide. Looking closer at the building design, you can see here is our two-story memory care building. There's actually a three-part design. The first part's the memory care, two-story. On the corner, we have a two-story assisted, and in the center, we have services for trash and the kitchen and dining located here. What's not shown in this axon is we are employing some solar strategies. We have solar panels on the roof, as well as solar panels on a covered parking on this side of the site. And what we don't see here is a drive-by from Jefferson Boulevard. Is there any way that you can get that on? I am clicking. Ah. Here we go. So this will highlight some of the, can I pause it? Some of the design features. We are employing tower elements to anchor the corners of the buildings on the site, as well as identify the entries to the assisted living and memory care. There's simulated stone veneer, couple colors of stucco, and a tile roof. I have a sample board adjacent to be, if we want to pass that around or we want to look at it after this. Here we're coming up to the center, this, we're on Jefferson, the center of the project. This would be the dining entry, and we're coming up to the two-story memory care with its covered entry here. Oops, and next slide, please. Here's an exhibit showing the retaining wall along the Clark'sburg Trail, as you can see on the top slide. You'll see some of it, maximum six feet. Now, it's important to remember that this retaining wall only covers about half of the site, of the site, as you go down that Clark'sburg Trail, and it tapers down to about six inches. The bottom exhibit, it's hard for me to see here, is mostly the guardrail. We've lowered the retaining wall to six inches, so it's a minimum impact from our site. Thanks. And here's a view going down Clark'sburg Trail. Again, you can see the retaining wall here, assisted living facility behind it, you're coming up to the assisted living facility entry. Now, mind you, the, that wall is screened by those existing trees that will stay there. And you can go to the next slide. And that's all ahead.
Great, thank you. We also have a request to speak. Charlotte Dorsey?
First of all, I want to comment that I think this is a great idea for West Sacramento, but I have some comments and suggestions about the planning and the development of this particular project. By definition, an assisted living facility is a living arrangement in which personal services such as meals, housekeeping, transportation, assistance with medications are available to needed people living in their own residential facility. Typical assisted living services include access to healthcare and medical services, assistance with eating, bathing, dressing, toiletries, et cetera, 24-hour emergency call systems for residents, three meals a day, housekeeping and laundry services, exercise and wellness programs, shuttle buses, and transportation. Page five of the description in your packet, there's a statement that says, "Given the age of the residents living at the assisted living facilities, most residents are not expected to drive their own vehicles." When seniors all over the country are asked to rate the most important supports for their daily living, access to transportation is number one and number two. There is one YOLO bus stop near the development at the corner of Gateway and Jefferson. It is not covered or protected from weather. There is a rule of thumb that if a bus stop is more than one block away from where the senior lives, persons with mobility challenges cannot make the trip, and it is challenging for an older person to wait in the hot sun or cold weather. So I have two possible suggestions and solutions for this. One is for you all and the city to work with YOLO bus towards a safe, accessible, and protected bus stop or bus stops. The second is something that many assisted living communities have implemented, to have a dedicated summer place shuttle to take residents to the Southport Shopping Center and to the Community Center, which is a hub of additional activities and socialization opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you. That was our only request to address the Planning Commission? I don't close public comment, right? It's just a workshop, okay.
I would request that you keep it open, keep the workshop open anyway, in case we have some questions that we can clarify tonight. Keep the workshop open anyway, in case we have some questions that we can clarify tonight.
Okay, thank you. Would you like to go first, Commissioner?
Sure, since I, since I seem to open my mouth first. Thank you very much, and Charlotte, for your comments there. Very helpful. And the photos and video mockups were, were actually very helpful as well. I did have a hard time envisioning the retaining wall and understanding how that was going to work. The retaining wall goes along the back of the property where there is a currently functioning ditch. I'm not sure where the function goes if we get rid of the ditch, because at this point, or this time, the, the description is that the ditch is going to be paved over. I'm not sure why, though, actually, if there's a retaining wall there. But I'm assuming that you have accounted for the, the water flow. I'm sorry, this would be your?
Question for applicant, would you like to address?
Yes, I'd like to respond to that. So the, the ditch, correct, is there. The, we are only providing a retaining wall to provide our, the access drive behind, and it does not cover the entire ditch. So it will be, it will, say, some of the ditch will still remain, as those trees will remain, and we will still have some detention for water flow into that.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's helpful, ma'am, okay. There were, there were a few comments that were being asked to discuss tonight. One of them is how we determine the land use of this property, and this, there's, there's two questions I heard. One is what type of land use it is, and the second is how do we actually classify it? And I believe it's most appropriate to, to do it by acreage, if that was one of the options, instead of by parcel. I, I think that would weight it a little bit more properly. If, am I off-base here? Are you not requesting? Okay, you are requesting that, okay. So we need to determine how we apply the land use, and I think acreage is probably the most fair, as it's weighted towards area. I am struggling with what type of land use it is. It is some, it is public facility of types depending on the services that are offered there, but it's also residential in some, some regards. So I'll, I'll leave it to the rest of the commission to discuss that, and before I actually give an opinion on that one. I personally am okay with the decreased parking. However, I don't understand the loss of public open space to provide parking, especially since the parking is required for the facility, and we're already decreasing the amount of spaces that are being required. If we could get some examples of what public open space land uses are in the community, that might be helpful. I should have asked that in advance. I'll continue with my comments, and if you can come up with some, just interrupt me. At this point, we have a, a loss of a third of an acre of public open space, but parcel two, where there's retail, is also completely public open space, and I'm not sure how we are planning to develop pub, retail on public open space as well. So we have a loss of a third of an acre of public open space, and then we're planning to, to change the rest of it to mixed use, and I'm not really okay with that, unless there's a really good reason behind it. Public open space, retail, mixed use. By really good reason, I'd like to know the benefit of forfeiting the public open space there. So I believe that, that's it for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lebig. Do we have any other questions or comments?
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Jeremy.
I want to come back to the, the, the parking numbers that were given out there. When you say that there's going to be 73 parking spaces, is that including the parking for your employees?
It does.
Yes, yes. I think at, at, at any one time, the most number, the maximum number of employees that would be on-site at any one time, I calculated to be 44. Yeah, because they're going to provide 24-hour care over three, three shifts. So based on the, the number of employees that would be on-site, the most would be 44. So we feel that should be.
And that's during the day, in that six to five timeframe, I think I read?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, so that leaves 29 parking spaces between 6:00 AM and 5:00 potentially, for everybody else, visitors, possibly seniors that own their car, or that still own a car?
True, yes.
Would it be helpful if the applicant could provide a, perhaps a little more description about how the facility would function, and perhaps some of their anticipated demographics?
Please.
It could help inform some of the parking considerations.
Doug Sproul, President of Mosaic Management. We will manage the day-to-day operations. Typically, a 0.4 ratio is plenty per unit of, for parking. To answer your question, unfortunately, when you calculate how many visitors are going to come, it's not that significant. It's 10% or below a day. Keep in mind with public transportation, somewhere around 50% to 70% of our entry-level staff, which is about 70% of our entire staff, utilize public transportation or ride bicycles. It's an entry-level position. You could equate it to someone that works at McDonald's, as far as that skill level, that starts at McDonald's. So it's very similar. Does that answer your question?
Well, I, it, it just still seems like a relatively low number, given the fact that the entire area around there, it's not like we're next to a commercial area yet, where they can park. I mean, those are residential streets that I believe are, I'm pretty sure Gateway Drive has no parking, right? And I know Jefferson is. I know across the street, you have a private apartment complex. So all the spaces are full, where do I park? Was kind of where I was going.
Yeah, and, and that's always a concern. We haven't seen that, as long as we adhere to that 0.4 per unit, that we've ever had parking issues with our projects. And I've done about 100 of them around the country, so. You know, there, that is one of the concerns with this project, is that there's no overflow parking, so to speak. But generally, that, that ratio of 0.4 works fine for us. Because keep in mind, where you're using that 44, you're saying every one of those people drive, that's really probably about 20 cars that are by staff, so that leaves 50 available. When we talk about residents driving, that number is 2% to 5% that maintain cars. For assisted living, memory care residents obviously don't have that ability to operate a motor vehicle. So, so you're parcel, you know, you have to parcel it down as you look at that.
And, and you're looking at 180s, what was it, potential residents?
I believe it's.
The maximum is 205.
Yeah, max of 205, and of that, it's 80 bed memory care. 96 memory care. So of the 205, you would subtract 96 of those beds right off the top, because none of those residents can own a car or drive. That's a secured facility where they, they don't go out on their own, so.
I, it, it doesn't really alleviate my concern. It seems like you could still hit a, like a Sunday afternoon, when there's 44 people working, let's say they all drove their cars that day, and, you know, they didn't want to wait for the bus, and, you know, now we got 50 people that want to come see grandma. It just, I mean, I.
I understand the concern.
Seems kind of low.
And, and again, you know, we, we haven't experienced that as long as we use that threshold.
Okay.
And again, I think.
And that 0.4 threshold, explain that again for us?
It's 0.4 per unit.
0.4 per unit.
Yeah. So, and it's 178 units.
And that's where we get the?
That's where we get the 73 spaces.
Gotcha, okay.
And, and again, keep in mind from a, from a resident standpoint, 96 of those are, you know, right off the top. Is that, I understand, it may not alleviate your concern.
And I like the design of, of what you've done here, but I'm just, you know, if there's no parking, I think a lot of people would be tempted to park in that, you know, in this lane that goes around the service area, which would be, you know, a problem for fire and that sort of thing.
And that will be no parking, strip for fire?
And the rear service aisle will have to be striped as a fire lane. It's not wide enough to accommodate parking in there, minimum 20-foot horizontal clear.
Okay.
My name is Bob Kyle. I represent the ownership of the project, and we looked at the same thing with the parking, because that's always a concern. The, the problem is, is that when, when you look at solutions to the parking problem, it becomes arbitrary. So what we did was, we went to the 100 centers of experience and looked at the, if there were any parking issues, and the only time they had parking issues is when they were under 0.4. So that's why we came up with it. We're not interested in having parking issues on the site, and so we've, we've, you know, it's important to us as well to not have, to be able to park everyone on-site. So we're extremely confident that that 0.4, all the centers that we have, have the same parking ratio. So I really don't know how to answer a, is it enough space?
And I, I like the, I like the comparison number there, but I, I imagine a lot of those other facilities probably had something next to it where someone could park.
I, I don't know the answer to that question. You know, if they're, you know, it's, it's, it's talking about a problem we've never had at that ratio, so it's hard for me to, to project.
Sure, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
Just the, the parking issue, that would make me.
That concerns you.
One way or the other, on how we would zone it.
Hey.
I don't, I don't have a lot to comment. I think it's a worthwhile project to look at. I do agree that we should look at that in the aggregate and not individual. That's probably the best way to look at it. I agree that it does allow us some flexibility for future projects in that area. I'm curious how other municipalities are zoning similar projects. Have we looked at that?
We have done, you know, some research on that. We know our developer here this evening has at least got a few other similar projects entitled to the region. The one that comes to mind was out in Lincoln. I don't believe it's ever, has proceeded to construction, you know, yet, but I know that was one that was entitled recently, and there's, was, you know, it even, I believe, was an article about it in the Business Journal. So we feel like we've gotten a pretty good handle on this, you know, project and, you know, for the site. We, similarly, I think to what Commissioner Lebig was referring to about, you know, it's, it's sort of quasi-residential, sort of quasi-commercial, and that's partially why we wanted to bring it here tonight, is it's, it does have implications for the rest of that property there in the town center of Southport, and so we definitely appreciate the, the input on that this evening, because, you know, what we do on this project then has implications for the remaining property, you know, there in Southport, which is obviously in a, you know, in the town, what we know as the town center for, in planning parlance.
I appreciate that. Can you remind me, what is parcel two? What's the intention for parcel two?
Parcel two, they're not intending to develop it at this time. They're only proposing to provide a, a through-block pedestrian trail. They only showed, in your, in your staff report, there is an attachment to the site plan that shows what, if that parcel was rezoned from public open space to mixed use, what would be the feasibility of development, and they were just showing a retail just, you know, just for feasibility purposes. They have no intentions of developing parcel two.
Since they're proposing to.
So why, why are we splitting? What would be the reason to split it?
I think they're, they want to, well, for one, is that the mixed, the assisted living facility will only be allowed in a mixed-use zone, so would not be allowed in a public open space zone. And getting back to Commissioner, no, Lebig's question about what you can do in a public open space zone, you're looking at outdoor recreation, you're looking at crop production, that's about all you can do in a public open space zone. And then it's too small for the city to take on that project for development of a park site, it's just too small, so they have no intentions of developing a city park on that, that piece of property.
Yeah, but since they're proposing a parcel map, you know, the entire property is under consideration, you know, from that standpoint. So we did ask them to show, you know, at least one possible, you know, development, to make sure that that, you know, that parcel two, you know, could, you know, feasibly host, you know, something reasonable of size and consideration. We, we don't want that parcel two to essentially just remain kind of a no-man's land, if you will, because it is triangular, you know, in shape, and, you know, which means you're going to lose some of the utility, you know, for that, you know, site. So we did ask that, you know, at least we, since the entire property was being considered on a parcel map, and part of the parcel map, we need to show that development of the property is, is feasible, you know, regardless of zoning for this purpose. So we believe they have, have done that. We will probably look at that property through the general plan update, you know, and to see if we want to continue maintaining a public open space, you know, zoning on the north end or not. Is that really where we want to, you know, continue to go? Because, I mean, realistically, as a site as Sandra mentioned, that's really not suitable for a, you know, city of, publicly-owned park. What really could you do there? If it was a public open space, remain that zoning on there. But it is, it is somewhat related to this, but I think in a broader context, when we do the general plan, that would be the opportunity to decide, you know, what do we really want for that northern end of this property, since it is a gateway location, you know, into Southport.
Well, I'm glad to hear you are looking at that. I don't have the same concern with that piece right along Jefferson, but I appreciate Commissioner Lebig's concern. Again, I, I think it's a worthwhile project to look at, it's something I think we need, if it's the right project.
Commissioner Moore?
I have a few questions. You know, they talked about parking, and I thought parking was a good issue, but parking was for the assisted living group more than the other? And there's absolutely virtually no parking down by where that building's being built, just where the little circle is. All your major parking is cleared at the other end of the project, and assisted living, you would think you would want to have something a little closer to it. I also, in the parking, thought it was kind of unique that out of all the parking spots you had, you had four handicap spots, and probably more of your people are handicapped than that, that's the majority of the people, that's why they're there. So it just seemed like you didn't have nearly enough handicap spots. My major concern, and I couldn't tell anything that you were doing with it, but for the memory impaired group, the Alzheimer's group, there's two floors to that facility, and it looked to me that the second floor was an open area looking down to the first floor. That just seemed like a little... Were you going to comment that, yes, that's true? It just doesn't seem like you want to have an open area on the second floor looking to the first floor, and I, I make that comment only because my mother was in a facility like that, and they do strange things in there. They're, those people are, it's terrible illness and a terrible disease, but you don't want to have it open where they can get to it. Now, if I talk about, you can talk about it if you want, you don't have to, you can just have it for our next meeting and be aware, but I'm just kind of scared that you have people looking down.
Sure, no, no, I, I just want to comment on the parking. So we do have parking about 17 or 18 located around that circular drive drop-off.
I saw that, yeah.
For assisted, so, you know, we've, we've tried to move as much as we can, it's, we are constrained a little bit because our site wedges down, and the design fits obviously better in this orientation. The, to address your accessible parking, we've, we've, the code requires a minimum X for the number of parking, and we provided that. The stalls are regular nine-by-18 space and moved them over.
I totally agree. I, I'm not saying that you didn't provide what's absolutely required of you, I'm just saying that in a facility like this, you would think that you would have extra handicap because of the facility itself.
In the.
Not that you can't get by with four, 10 might be better when you're in a handicap facility.
True. You have to remember that we're not, and that's a good point, and I'm not saying that we shouldn't do that. I've, we've designed, our company has designed probably hundreds, hundreds of these, and then this approach has seemingly worked very well. We aren't providing parking for people who are at that facility mostly. It's mostly gas. It's mostly guests or visitors or the people that work there. So, uh, to that, to that point, I would say, uh, the design strategy, I think you'll find that it works out if you were to look at different cities where we've designed this kind of, uh, the parking to, to assist the buildings. That would work out. The two-story memory care, I could see where, you know, it's a little unusual they'd have a two-story memory care, but however, uh, it's a, we do understand that we need to be sensitive to these residents. And we have, they're in design, uh, we will have barriers or higher walls where they won't.
I didn't see any of that in what I was looking at at this level.
Right, at this detail, correct.
And, and that's fine. I was just making, tonight's a comment night. And so you want to know what I'm thinking before we get there.
I appreciate it.
Is that going to be a lockdown facility? Okay. My next comment, and this is probably more for our staff level to look into. I know that we have a turn area going into that facility now. But the original apartment complex that was across the street, all their access to that property was supposed to come off of Devon. And when they left, that was to come out and that's how they were to get to that project when we originally voted on it. And you don't have to answer it, David. I'd prefer you look it up and make sure that what I'm telling you is true, but I think I'm right. And then, uh, I think arbitrarily, we put a turn lane in there. And I know our entire planning commission questioned how that turn lane got in there. And that makes me question, since there was no traffic study done on that, whether there needs to be a traffic study done for this facility at all.
Yeah, I know when that, before the signal went in, there was a traffic study done at that time, you know, for the signal when that came in.
I don't think we ever saw it. It was a staff-level decision.
That was correct at the time. I do recall that, um, there was a traffic signal agreement done. Now, this is many several years ago now. Yeah.
Well, I mean, I thought the applicant did a nice job trying to help eliminate that by bringing in your staff early and kind of off-peak hours because there's, that already backs up terrible now. And so with adding this in, I just was curious what you thought was going to happen. And something we can discuss at the next, the next agenda item when it comes back to us.
Commissioner Moore, can I just, um, are you referring to where the light is at the intersection of Valley Oak Lane?
Yes.
Yes, there is space for, um, it anticipated that there would be a turn lane there. If you go in south on Jefferson, it anticipates that there, there is space there. And it's not, um, it's striped, I believe, right now, but there is space for a turn lane, uh, a left turn lane into this project site. So...
I just know that when the apartments went in, the only way they could access, they could make a right turnout, but they could not make a left turnout of that apartment complex. They had to go down to Devon and that's how they were going to exit that project.
Yeah, that, that is correct. I believe the signal came after apartments came in.
And so I'm just asking that we take a second look at that.
Yeah, the, the signal was, is definitely much more so for, put in more, more so for this property to provide a protected southbound left into it anticipation of the site, but, you know, eventually maybe being a commercial site. It was, so it, although it benefits the apartment complex, it was really more for this property to get that southbound protected left. But we'll pull out that agreement and the traffic study from before.
I'd just like you to take a second look at it. And my final comment is, I don't, and I'm kind of listening to everybody and I'm trying to remember what we're doing. And Sandra made a comment that they're not going to do any improvements at all on parcel two if this project was to begin.
The only, the only improvements would be the pedestrian through-block trail.
Right, but I don't know if we were granting this thing, why we wouldn't ask them to keep the retaining wall up, do something to maintain the entire piece of property. If you're going to have the property, I don't even know why you're dividing the property. I've got to go back with what Joe's talking about and going. I don't even quite understand why we're dividing the property if there's no, nothing going to happen on it. If they think they're going to do something later, come back later and we'll talk about what they're going to put in there. But I can't figure out why you divide it just for the heck of it. I don't think I've seen that happen before. So I think those are my comments. It's just strictly though, I, I'm, I'm still a little concerned about handicap. I'm concerned about the, the memory unit and get a little bit more definition on it. So, thank you. Still yelling me, but go ahead.
Okay, so, just back to the point of the handicap spaces. You have to think about, the people that are coming in are visitors. And just like any other center, the visitors, uh, are the ones that have the percentage of handicap, not the residents of the site. So although a large number of the residents are handicapped, they don't drive cars and they don't use those spaces. So that's the rationale behind that. As far as the parcel is concerned, as you guys know, it's, it's a difficult piece to develop. It's a very interesting shape, long and triangular. When we came in originally and we saw the open space, we had open discussions at our pre-development, uh, meetings that the end was going to be a park. So we were willing to dedicate it as a park. And then it came back that it wasn't large enough and that it was in a difficult spot, high traffic, not an ideal place to have a park right as you come in. So then the description came about how important the, the, the trail is that comes through there. And the discussion came, well, wouldn't it be nice if we had something that was down at that end that would benefit the people that were using the trail? Which would be some sort of retail, some sort of coffee shop, something that where there was a gathering spot at that end of the parcel. So quite honestly, when we didn't know what to do with that piece at the end because it's, you know, it's extremely difficult, it's extremely small. So the reason for the parcel split was to create something that worked for the apartment across the street, for the people using the trail, a gathering spot where they could stop and, and get a cup of coffee, uh, use a restroom, something of that nature. So that's the reason why that parcel split was suggested.
But you're also using part of that parcel for parking, correct?
No, no.
None of the parcel?
No, it parks itself.
No, it, yeah.
Yeah, it parks itself. So anyway, that's the reason for the parcel split. Because it's a, you know, we sat down and we tried to talk about monuments or anything like that, but it is such an odd-shaped piece that it was difficult. So anyway, that was, that was the logic behind it and it was, it was supported in the discussion. So, um, that's, that's the reason for that. And then also, one of the benefits of a project like this in a location on a busy street is that it doesn't generate a lot of traffic. There's, unfortunately, there's not a lot of visitors that come in and the staff is there for longer periods of time. So you don't have a lot of coming and going in the site. So from a traffic standpoint, it's, it's a good fit.
Commissioner Guerrero, do you have any questions?
Yes, I have a few questions. Um, as Commissioner Leibig suggested that, um, you know, we have to look at the question that has been raised on considering the usage, whether it be, um, high-density or a community facility. And I had a question related to a comment here, um, that the, that if it is to be considered a quasi-public use of community facility and that it provides services that are available to the community at large. And to what extent that would be the case? I just have a question regarding that. And if you want to answer it, that's fine.
Oh, in the sense that it... That was put in there in the sense that it's, it, it, you could consider it a community facility. It provides services that would be available to, you know, the community at large. It's a, um, you can, um, consider it, um, a facility that would be, it is available to the public, um, but, you know, privately owned. So it's just something we were trying to, you know, help the commission, um, make some, um, determination as to how do we look at this? Is it residential? Is it community facility? It's not residential in the traditional sense of the word, but it does provide housing for a specific population. And so, and then you could also look at, well, it's also not only housing, but it's a community facility or it's a facility. And so it's just kind of hard to put it into those land use mixes that's called out in the land use plan. And that's one of the reasons why we brought it forward to the, to this commission to help us make that.
Yeah, I mean, officially, we're treating this, and the use permit is for a residential care facility. The framework plan, although this site has a mixed-use zoning, the framework plan only provides, you know, fairly limited, you know, direction on that in terms of mixed use. And then it points back to following the community commercial or C2 zoning for a lot of the kind of backbone stuff, you know, including uses. So, uh, so officially, we are treating this as a residential care facility, which is a conditional use, so hence the use permit. But where the, where the framework plan comes in, which is, you know, an extra layer here, it is important to, you know, sort of, we're going to ask, ultimately ask the commission to make a finding about how they wish to treat this facility in terms of those land use mixes so that it informs what can go on with the rest of the property that's within that district that the framework plan allows. So even though we're talking about a specific development proposal here, you know, there is the larger question of how does this fit into the town center planning district that the framework plan allotted, you know, with those land use mixes? And, you know, obviously noting that that plan is almost 20 years old now. And so we're trying to apply it, you know, as it was crafted then, but in today's standards. So we certainly believe it's not too great of leap to, you know, consider this to be a community facility and that, again, the, you know, the residents there could may come from anywhere, but it may very well be that local West Sacramento residents, if they have, you know, elderly parents or relatives, um, that need this type of care, this would be a facility, you know, close by where it would make it easier for them to visit and to have that, you know, support and things like that. So, and as our, obviously as our, you know, demographics and population, you know, is aging, certainly believe there will be a demand for facilities, you know, like this, you know, going forward. And so, you know, from that standpoint, since it isn't a private, you know, residential community like the apartments across the street, it's not quite analogous to that. Certainly not like a retail, commercial type of development either. So we do feel like it's, you know, could be argued that it could fit into that community facilities. Plan, especially since the framework plan doesn't really define that very well. And so, you know, it, it seems to go into that regard. And since it's, it is a residential care facility, that's at least how we're treating it from a purely zoning standpoint.
Very helpful. In considering, considering it a residential facility, will it also undergo the requirements under community care licensing in California? And for the, um, for, so you'll have the locked facility. Will you, um, what, what kind of licensing requirements will you need to go through for that part of it?
There'll also be residential care facilities.
Sir, um, if you please could come to the mic to state that so that we can make sure the audio is recorded and our audience at home can hear your statements, please.
It, it will be a licensed residential care facility for the elderly. So it does go through a state regulatory agency for licensing. It does not go through OSHPOD like a skilled nursing facility would.
Okay.
But it does, it is governed by a state licensing agency. And it'll go through that both in the plan review and the operational aspect. So it has to meet certain criteria from a design standpoint, as well as from a programmatic standpoint.
Okay, that's good to know. That helps ease, you know, one, one of my concerns when I saw your staffing, um, to meet the staffing requirements, making sure that you have medical, um, treatment team on hand. Should there be a medical condition that arises where it requires an emergency? And, um, and it affecting our local resources, you know, being tapped to provide that support if you have it on site? And so hopefully with community care licensing, that there are some requirements you need to meet for that.
Yeah, now, we don't, we're not, uh, you know, EMTs. If there's an emergency where someone is, you know, in, in desperate need, like they would call 911, we still call 911, okay? So we're not, we're not delivering high-level medical treatments in the community. We assist with the activities of daily living. Helping people get dressed, helping them take their medications, helping them ambulate down to the dining room where there's three meals a day. Providing them transportation that's handicap accessible with a wheelchair lift, those types of things. But if there is an emergency, uh, our staff is trained to call 911 just like that resident would in their own home. So I want to be clear on that.
Okay. And if there was an emergency where they needed to be hospitalized, have you done like a time study to see how long it would take? And in looking at our resources that would take away from their time, have you taken a look at that yourselves?
Not clear. You mean as far as if they have an event, how long their typical hospital stay is?
Not their hospital stay, but the time to, you know, pick them up and transport.
I haven't looked at that, you know, as far as the amount of time that the responders are at the community to transport. We average about, um, seven trips per 100 people a month, per 100 residents.
Okay.
Okay, um, so in this case, that's where the, the number 14 came up with because there's, we have a, a bed capacity of 205. Our actual occupancy will probably be closer to about 185 to 190. So, so we do have those trips that occur. If they're non-life threatening, those trips are generally made by the facility or the family.
Okay.
Okay, so we're talking about if, if, uh, the EMTs transport, those are chest pains, significant falls, strokes, um, that are life-threatening. If they're non-life threatening, those are transported by others, either the community or, or family. So does that help?
Yes, it does help, just to give me an idea of what that looks like. And are family members permitted to stay overnight if there was an ailment that, um, that, you know, the resident is experiencing and they just wanted to provide additional emotional support or any kind of support?
Yeah, that's a rare exception and there's a limit to that. I think it's three days. We have a regulatory limitation on how, how long non-admitted residents can be in the building. Because there's, you know, to admit somebody to the building, we have to have physician orders and there's a whole procedural, um, component that we have to go through for them to be there. So, um, for instance, if mom is ill and the daughter wants to come and stay overnight, we permit that. But beyond a night or two, that's not allowed. And it's pretty rare, quite, quite frankly. Generally what happens is they'll take mom home with them. Because then they, they can maintain some, uh, semblance of ordinary life themselves and mom will stay with them. It's not very often, though.
Okay, and that was just only leading up to the parking, if it's not the case, that there wouldn't be a need for additional parking for residents that had family members wanting to stay. So it doesn't sound like it's, um...
The unfortunate part of it is, is really that, um, less than 20% of our residents get a visitor on a monthly basis. There's, we call it stopping and dropping. And unfortunately, the lion's share of our people get left there and get visited very infrequently. So, unfortunate, but...
Um, well, that's, that's good to know. And, um, looking at what was presented regarding the shuttle bus, I just, and, um, the recommendations that were provided by Ms. Dorsey, what, what were your thoughts about that?
Yeah, we will have a shuttle bus.
Okay.
And scheduled transportation that goes to all of the shopping, doctor's appointments, post office, um, just out on scenic tours. And that'll be, uh, you know, we have a licensed bus driver that is full-time position that provides that service.
Okay, good. Looking at our residents and what they possibly could afford to have their family member placed there, in considering it as a community, um, facility, what will be your rates? Do you have an estimate more or less for a resident?
Yeah, they'll, they'll begin in the mid, mid 2000 range per month, per apartment, and go up from there, depending on the level of services.
And will you be accepting any type of insurance, anything?
We do accept long-term care insurances. Unfortunately, there's not a real Medicaid program here in California that provides enough reimbursement. But, uh, we're seeing a lot of combinations of different funding sources now where, you know, long-term care insurance, uh, other benefits, pension plans, as well as families pooling their assets to help. their assets to help support that.
We're going a little bit outside the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission, which is traditionally more land use issues.
Okay.
So, I just have requests that we stick within those issues, please.
Okay. Okay. Let's see, what else? I did have a question regarding, and I don't know, I just wanted to put it out there, and you can give me some feedback. Given that this will be a licensed facility, usually, the county is engaged with, like an ombudsman or an adult protective services, and just wanted to see if there was any connection with the county as far as them being aware of this facility being considered.
I sat down too early. Absolutely. That is one of the requirements of our state licensure, is to have, post and have ombudsmen attend meetings on a monthly basis in the community. So, there'll be that resource available for all of the residents, and that's a state licensure requirement.
Okay.
So, and also post, you know, AAA area agency on aging. Any of those resources will have that information available for the residents, and we also have to provide them a public telephone for their use to call those if they need to. Okay?
Well, I do, I do appreciate you considering, you know, having a residential facility here. I think definitely needed for our aging community, and appreciate you considering this. Thank you.
Commissioner Galvin had?
I just have one question. I'll make it quick. So, normally, for a project this size, it would require 141 parking spaces, is that what I heard?
Well, we have in our zoning ordinance a reference to senior housing, which is really not quite the same thing that we're, you know, talking about here. I mean, that's really was a housing that's dedicated to seniors, but independent, you know, living.
So, I appreciate that, but generally, around 140. With 140, how many handicap spots are normally required?
That's in the building code. It's a ratio in there. I think it's one for the first 25, and then some more, if we, if we have the architect in the room who knows what that is offhand.
So, I...
It's a building code ratio, and I don't have it in front of me. It's not a zoning matter, it's actually in the building code.
I would just comment that four does seem like a few, and maybe they should consider, or maybe you could consider conforming to what we would normally put there as far as handicap spaces, even though you're only looking at 70-some-odd spaces? Maybe that's a thought.
And...
If it normally is six or eight with that, I don't know if that would make or break a project, and maybe that's something to consider. Something to think about, maybe putting in the required number of handicap parking spaces for the number of spaces that would normally be required in the project, if it's 140, whatever that ratio is, if that's six or eight as opposed to four. Just something to think about, as I've heard it's a concern across the board here.
Thank you, Commissioner Galvin. Commissioner Leibig had one other question for the applicant?
Actually, he answered it.
Oh, he did?
But I do have a comment. So, the, the public open space, I know we're going to have to work on this a little bit. I didn't understand that the city was actually not interested in maintaining it as public open space. That will weigh in on it. So, as, as we consider it over the next couple of weeks, I'm not sure how we could make sure that we attract complementary businesses that would work adjacent to an assisted-living facility. I can imagine a cafe, someplace where residents can walk and find something to go to, and businesses will benefit as well, and maybe the families could visit. Just ideas. How do we get that into this? I'm not sure. How do we zone it to get there? Something I'd like to think about over the next couple of weeks. Also, it's backed up to the trail. It'd be nice to have an interface with that trail as well. So, those are my only thoughts on that.
From what I understand, it is, it is proposed to be interfaced with the trail?
Well, there's a trail on the second parcel.
Okay. But I thought I read somewhere that there was going to be, I thought I read somewhere that there was going to be some kind of bridge or access from the trail to the parcel two?
There's the trail that goes through it. What, what I was trying to get at was, for example, if you have outdoor seating, putting it along the actual Clarksburg Bike Trail as an interface on that side.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying.
You could make it a horse thing, where they bring all the horses...
Sure. You know, I ran into a horse out there last week.
That's where they could take off from.
That's true.
You want an idea? Okay, you didn't like that idea.
Sounds like a wonderful idea.
I'm Julie Bradshaw with LRS Architects, and as part of the feasibility of the parcel two, we proposed retail as something that might work well with the adjacent apartments and with the assisted-living center. And just as throwing out ideas, the, we did conceptualize like a retail concept that had a cafe or such, with possibly even outdoor seating that faced the trail, adjacent to the through-block trail. So, there's definitely possibilities of having, being able to have the pedestrian access as well as the required parking for retail, so.
Thank you for adding that, I appreciate it. So, just to go over our concerns, we had concerns about the parking. I'm sorry. Do we have any other questions for the applicant?
No, but I have a comment for our staff. And it came, you heard it once already, Sandra, and that was to get ahold of a couple other cities that have large facilities. I just saw one in Elk Grove that's very similar on Bond Road or something. It's down there, very similar type facility to what they're proposing here. And, you know, see how their parking works in the other cities. So, I think to make a couple of comments. And could I just make one more comment, because I forgot it after it was said? Sandra, if you think about this, you know, you have a third story that's kind of a, just sitting up there, and we always talk about making it available for phones?
Wireless.
Wireless, yeah. Thank you. You know, we should at least look into if that's possible to put something in that. I don't know if it was available or not, but I thought of it later.
They, they have left open the possibility, the option, to do some steeling, so that is available.
No monopines.
No.
No.
Okay, all of my concerns have been answered, so I'll just kind of go over review on, on what we, our suggestions were. We had questions about the parking that we wanted staff to look at.
Yes, we wanted to look to see what's being required in other cities for assisted-living facilities. And I don't believe we heard a resolution regarding how we want to consider the mixed uses in the town center area.
Correct.
I, I don't believe I got resolution? We didn't get resolution?
We did not.
Okay.
We did not come to consensus on that. Concern about the public open space for the second parcel, but I guess we can come back to that when development possibly comes ahead.
Yeah, definitely the general plan, too.
We have to vote on the land use next, at the next meeting, yeah.
Next time, correct. So, maybe some possibilities on, on that, since we have to... I, I'm sorry, I need to go back. I did have a question about the few spaces that straddled the open space. So, would that line just get moved over, or we would just allow it?
That line is, that line is where the line is.
Okay.
For now.
So, there were a couple of spaces that are in the open space, parking spots.
Sixteen.
Thank you, 16 spaces. But we are going to allow that to, since it wasn't a majority of the spaces that were taking over?
Yeah, and the staff report lays out our justification for, we don't see it as being an issue, because the parking space is a, proposed to be located on parcel one.
Right.
But keep in mind that parcel one will have two zonings. Only 82, about 8,200 square feet of parcel one is zone public open space, so that's where the issue of, you know, the parking. But if you had a situation where a parking lot was being proposed on a public open space zone, and that was the only development on a public open space zone, we would not be, that would not be allowed.
Okay.
That would be the primary use. In this instance, you have the 16 parking spaces that are pertinent to a specific project, and so it's not a primary use. It's, you know, it's just serving this particular parcel. So, that was our justification for not seeing it, you know, really be an issue, but we thought we wanted, you know, bring it, you know, to the Planning Commission and flush this issue out.
Okay. And then, when it comes up on our February 20th meeting, will we have any feedback from the fire department as far as, I know the applicant and...
That we should, we should have feedback. By then, the environmental document is certainly circulating right now. The closing period is February 13th. Staff report would have to be done by then, so if I don't have any comments in the staff report, I would have to, you know, make them available to you, certainly by the February 20th meeting.
Okay, great, thank you. Did I miss anything? Okay, great. Sure, come on up.
Just trying to clear a bunch of stuff off for the next round.
First off, we're really looking forward to doing the project in this area. It is the first project in West Sacramento. You're not the only jurisdiction that doesn't have definitions for our use. And, you know, fortunately, a lot of the jurisdictions are coming up with specific designations for this type of a product. And it, but it's been difficult in each jurisdiction to figure out where we fit in. So, in certain jurisdictions, it's been deemed commercial, because we have employees that come and work at the site. We have some that has been deemed residential, because of the living facility that happens inside. So, the idea when we looked at this site was that it was a mixed-use site. So, to make it a truly mixed-use site, the facility itself is a mixed-use facility. And then, including the retail at the end, pretty much covered all of it. It covered from residential to commercial to retail, all on one site. So, that was the philosophy behind, at least with our discussions over mixed use in open space. We were very interested, like I said, we had no problem with the open space at the end. It's just a difficult piece in a difficult spot. So, I really want to put forth that we weren't in there trying to make more money to make another parcel. It's, it's what became a solution to something that there was no answer to at the time. Also, we submitted with our application, the parking, the jurisdictions, local jurisdictions that we've gotten recent conditional use permits from Carmichael, Citrus Heights, Lincoln, and Bakersfield, all using the same parking ratio. And these have all been within the last nine months. And we've provided that information to staff. So, I'm hoping that that is enough information. It's very typical in the industry. And then, last but not least, how do you guys feel about the project itself? I know we're talking about the nuts and bolts of it, but as far as this being in your town, is this generally a good feedback, or...
I'll go first. There's a need for this in our, in our community, so I do feel that this would fulfill a community need.
Sure, definitely.
I would say Mike.
I would agree.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree, definitely. I wanted to mention on the parking, though, the other components of the parking that have been asked, because I think we're concerned with the area where there's lack of parking availability, could make this a little different than those other facilities that we don't have the background for here. And I think given the nature of what was presented by a couple of our commissioners, that it makes it a little more unique for us to scrutinize the parking.
I understand. I'm just trying to give you that we've tried to comply with supplying the information from the other sites. I will tell you that fire, our demands for us for fire, because of the obvious reasons, does, having as much access as we need for fire and ambulance, does absorb a lot of space for, for parking. So, that is, that's one of our challenges. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Could staff also check with YOLO Bus to see what it would, what the feasibility of putting in a covered area for the nearest bus stop is, because I know they are on their own schedule, and it can be difficult to do after the fact? That was my, that was my last. I'd like to close the public workshop.
I just have one comment, just to back, back up. That is, as far as payment for the shelter, I, the question here is, does, does the city pay for the shelter?
I know we pay to maintain shelter. When a bus stop is sheltered, we pay to maintain them. Where the shelter itself comes from is, you know, from some different, you know, some sources. Sometimes YOLO Bus will provide them. Sometimes a developer can fund them, but I know that once a stop gets a shelter on...
What a great idea, David.
I agree with that one.
You just came out of the blue with that one.
Very good. If that could be explored as well, thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, I think we've talked as much as we can about this.
Can I just do a recap?
Yes, please.
I want to make sure that I address your concerns next time around. You want to know if, regarding the handicap spaces, what would be required if 141 spaces were required?
Correct.
Okay? And then, you want to know, you want additional information regarding parking that's being required in other cities for assisted-living facilities? And check on the bus shelter, provide and cover, what's the possibility of doing that? And then, a public open space, was your concerns already addressed regarding that?
For me, it was. Commissioner Leibig?
I'm going to work on thinking about that over the next couple of weeks.
All right. So, I just want to make sure I got everything.
Thank you.
Pardon me? Okay.
Plus, I think we need to talk about the turn light.
Oh, yes, yes.
Okay, could I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion to adjourn?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great, meeting adjourned, thank you.